I'd like to call to order the Watcom County Council member for November 7th, 2018. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Tim Blue.
Here.
Barbara Brenner.
Here.
Red Brown.
Here.
Barry Buchanan.
Here.
Tyler Byrd.
Here.
Todd Donovan.
Here.
Sat Paul Sado.
Here.
Would you all like to rise and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a couple of announcements, would you please turn off your cell phones? And if you'll be handing out paperwork to council members, please give one copy to the clerk for our office files. We have a special order of business introduction items. Because this council meeting fell on a Wednesday, it is necessary for us to schedule the introduction items at the beginning of the meeting to allow the required time between the introduction and final action. Do I have a...now, there is 21 items listed. Item 18 has been removed, which is this one here. And then we have substitute versions for item 10, which is the yellow version, this one. And we have additional information for 12, which is the two versions of green on this. Do I have a motion to introduce?
I move to introduce.
Second. Brenner moves to introduce. Mr. Byrd, seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven to zero. Next item up is the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve three sets of minutes?
I'll second.
Mr. Donovan moves approval. Ms. Brenner, seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes seven to zero. All right. Public hearings. So, audience members who've signed up at the back of the room prior to the beginning of our meeting will be called first and asked to form a line behind the signs on either side of the chambers. And by that, throughout all the public hearings, I ask that people line up and actually move forward to a vacant podium while the next person is speaking, so that we don't have a delay of people walking up and us waiting, all of us waiting for that to happen. If you're unable to sign up before the meeting, you'll be given an opportunity to address the council. Once we've gotten through all the folks listed on the hearing sheets, each speaker should state his or her name for the record, and we'll be given three minutes to address the council. Council staff will keep track of the time limits and will let you know when you have 30 seconds left to wrap up your comments. When a large group of individuals supports the same position on an issue, we encourage the selection of one or two representatives to speak on behalf of the entire group. So, the first item up for a public hearing is an ordinance adopting amendments to the Watcom County Comprehensive Plan related to density credits, PDRs and TDRs. And the recommended motion we're looking forward to is to forward this for concurrent review. This ordinance cannot be adopted this evening. The council must consider initiated comprehensive plan amendments concurrently, so the cumulative effect of the various proposals can be evaluated. All proposal amendments will be scheduled together for final adoption at a later date. So, we are voting on this one, I believe. No. This one, yeah, that's right. That's been a...that's the revised agenda revision notice. Do I have...so, I'm going to open it for a public hearing. Does anybody want to speak on this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. What's the wishes of the council?
I move approval for forwarding it, or whatever you do.
Ms. Brenner moves approval for concurrent forwarding. Mr. Buchanan, seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor...oh, no, it's a roll call vote, isn't it?
Tim Blue.
Yes.
Barbara Brenner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Byrd.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Aye.
Sat Paul Sado.
Yes.
Aye.
Passes seven to zero. Next item up is an ordinance amending Watcom County Code 24.11 Drinking Water, AB 218-303. Is there a staff report? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing, and the first person I have on the...or the people I have on the list is Douglas Whittinger, and Robert McLeod, Mary Kay Robinson, and Ivy Little. And then I think...I can't read the bottom...Anton, I can't read the bottom name, and Ron Roger Almscar. If you'd all like the lineup, that'd be great. Please do.
Thank you, council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Douglas Whittinger. I'm the Business Manager for the Deer Creek Water Association. And the handout that's coming to you addresses a few little facts about us. What I want to speak about in particular is about two years ago, the county worked together with the Water Utility Coordinating Committee, also known as the WOC, to amend the county's water system plan. And our discussions addressed growth, planned growth, system enhancements such as fire flows, and also revisions to the plan. And for two years, we felt like we were a bride beside you as we worked together through that process. We met almost weekly for two years to come up with the plan that was adopted. Now, Deer Creek feels like we're being left at the altar, because the council seems ready to make a decision without the WOC's full recommendation. Perhaps worse than our abandonment, we are wondering what the hurry is to pass this amendment, when the originator of the amendment in front of you has withdrawn their land use application and did so in May. And we are wondering if you were aware of that. We wish to be supportive of council and county objectives, especially as adopted in the Comprehensive Plan and the Water System Plan. However, when decisions about water are made without hearing the voices of the actual water providers, it gives us reason for concern, and that's why we're here. Our concern is that this ordinance will create inconsistencies with the county's comp plan and the water system plan, which may result in confusion, uncertainty, or even litigation. The council is set to vote on this matter that will benefit a handful of people when difficult...yet, when difficulties arise with the wells that you want to allow, those people come to the water systems for help and not to you. And you can see from the handout, there's some facts about peoples whose wells have failed within our water system. We're pleased to see your responsiveness to one of your constituencies that addresses this matter, and we're hopeful that you'll be equally responsive to Deer Creek's constituency of nearly 2,000 people. We've made two suggestions for the council. They're at the bottom of the handout, and we're grateful for your consideration. Thank you so much.
I just encourage people to move forward and be at a podium. And sir, if you're...this is a hearing for the...this particular ordinance related to water. If you wish to speak on a different issue, I think you want the open public session. Is that correct? Yep, thank you. All right, please.
Mary Kay Robinson, Bellingham. I'm a realtor here, and I work with people who buy and sell land. And in the past, I've also worked as a...doing loans, construction loans, for people building homes in the county. The current ordinance written on drinking water in the county is written 16 years ago. A lot has happened in 16 years concerning water resources. This, of course, was the topic of discussion the last few years with the Hurst decision. Rarely are past ordinances a one-and-done council action. They need to be updated periodically to keep up with advances in technology and present reality. With everything that's happened the past few years, there are now questions and glaring inconsistencies in how water associations fulfill their society duties. The current ordinance does not specify what it means to deliver service in a timely manner and when the clock starts. Also, in the ordinance, there is absolutely no definition of what constitutes reasonable as it pertains to cost. This makes no sense. Are we really going to tell landowners, who are now finally able to build their home, what the cost of water...their well will be...the cost of water would be well over $100,000, depending on how the water association defines reasonable? That means a reasonable cost could be different for every association. Is that how we want quasi-government agencies to act? Do we really want water associations to have monopolistic control over pricing for service? At least with public utilities, there's a regulatory commission to oversee that process. There is no oversight with water associations currently. Plus, the pricing inconsistency will play havoc with appraisals and land orders that try to get a construction loan from a bank. How does an appraiser fairly evaluate different properties of like-size land and square footage when the new home has an increased cost of water service over six figures? The appraisal won't work, and the loan won't pencil out. And how does that help in any way with affordable housing? That's been the buzzword for the last how many years? Given the above issues, the current ordinance makes no sense. We must clarify what timely means. We must absolutely define what reasonable service is. Proposed amendment to the ordinance with will make clear how and when water is delivered to future homeowners in the county. This ordinance will affect all landowners, who are just now being able to get back to having their piece of the American dream. I urge you to allow their dreams to become reality by approving the amended drinking water ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much for hearing me. Why are we here? We're here...
All right, you have to state your name.
Oh, Anton Carusa, Laurel Road. Okay. We're here because we came to the county council with the problem we've had with local water association way back in the spring or late winter. The WOC was instituted back in June. They've had nine meetings over four months, still no resolution of the major problems. The facts are that water associations put us into retail service areas and other landowners, and there's no infrastructure in place, and nobody informed us of being within their retail associations. They're also given extraordinary power that was not given to property owners, and there's no appeal process. There are with districts, but not with water associations. And so, your only recourse, if you don't like what's going on, is to take it to Superior Court. Now, reasonable and consistent are the major topics here. Charging a family farm $170,000 for water that they do not need, and giving a pot farm an $80,000 indulgence a couple miles away in the same district, that's not reasonable and consistent. Dr. Lawrence, on the East Axon Road, in order to get his building permit, had to pay the water association for one share, pay for monthly or yearly water, get no product. And he had to do that in order to get a denial of service letter, and then to be able to get building permits. How is that even legal, is my question, in my humble opinion? And how is it...we offered to pay for three shares and for water...and for watered monthly service and things like that, without getting any, and they declined us. Dr. Lawrence also...the disparity was he had to sign up...he was never had to sign up for water...to a water bane if it was ever installed. We even offered to do that as per their stated policy on their webpage, and they still declined it. There's no reasonable and consistent behavior here. Also, there will be no latecomers, and we've submitted data for you there. All the way down the Guide Meridian to the north of us and east of us, a quarter of a mile, there will be no latecomers to share in these fees. And we'll also, under the current system being...trying to be opposed on this, we will have to obtain easements for them, for their own personal benefit and not to ours. That's unfair. Earlier today, this afternoon, you heard from Glacier Water System. They have a policy of requiring a person to pay 150 feet, okay, of water pipe. Lake Watcom makes you pay 200 feet of water pipe. This is a huge concession from us to say, well, people in our position should have to pay for 500 feet. That's $50,000. These water associations are hiding behind a lack of transparency. You can't negotiate with them. You don't know what kind of deals they've made unless you go to court and get substantial discovery from them. It needs to be fixed. We're asking for your help for us and other peoples in the county. Thank you very much.
And then, just a reminder, if anybody else wishes to speak on the ordinance amending Watcom County Code 2411 Drinking Water, please come forward, otherwise we'll close the public hearing.
Is it my turn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I wasn't going to close it until you'd spoken, Roger.
I hadn't actually signed up, so...Roger Almscar, Land Use Consultant, I'm representing the Carusa family. I'll begin by commenting on what Mr. Whittinger just said about the land use application here, very briefly. We did submit a boundary line adjustment to move the boundaries around on the three vacant lots of record that the Carusas own, to create better building sites, more environmentally sound sites. And we had a big...kind of a big controversy with the wetland people in the county planning department, so we couldn't solve it during the timeframe we had, so we just let the application expire. We do tend to go back with that. The whole water issue's been on a separate time track. And Mr. Whittinger also said that the Water Utility Coordinating Committee is working on this, but for several months, they have refused to discuss the code issue. In fact, in a written statement that was sent to you, all council members, a few days ago, one of the bullet points is, "The WOC exists to facilitate the adoption or amendment of the CWSP, the water plan, and is not a regulatory body." That was a way that they decided to say, "We don't...we're not going to comment on code." That's what that was all about. So, I'll use the rest of my time to try to add some information to what Mr. Carusa said. The problem with the code as is, and it was adopted in 2002, I did some research on that, it grants too much power and discretion to water associations in decisions like he was talking about. If you read the code that's highlighted, or in my letter here that was submitted yesterday, if you're in the service area boundary, you have to hook on, period. Black and white, that's pretty arbitrary, in my opinion. There's no place to consider extenuating circumstances. In fact, the CWSP has an appeal process in it, but if you're in a retail service area, you're not allowed to use it. And the process is voluntary. If you have two people in a dispute, one party can say, "Well, I don't want to go there. So, go to court, sue me." And that's exactly what happened here. So, the Carusas are out tens of thousands of dollars...
30 seconds, please.
...because of the refusal of Deer Creek to negotiate a settlement, as they have done with several other people. So, I hope you'll read the letter carefully and agree that the text as is in here is certainly...could be amended. It's not perfect. It was written or finished by an attorney who knows a lot about water law. And so, I'll just close by saying, county officials, staff, have known about this for a month, and they've never called up and said, "Well, we have some ideas how to make this better." Never heard from them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move forward, and then after these two gentlemen, if no one else wants to speak on this issue, then we'll close the public hearing.
My name is Jay Mark Carrion. I live out on 2867 Jensen Road. I'm a board member of the Wise Qualcomm Water Association, and part of the wire program for water associations. About three years ago, we looked at this problem that it was coming, as it was coming at us. And what we did to ensure that all valley members and people in our declared service area had the opportunity to get water, was to put together a five-year program to look every other year, five years in advance, of who would want water in our area. So, we are working with every single person within our declared area. We have the tax overlay maps. We send out mailings to see who is interested in water shares. And we're willing and have talked with members of the valley of what their interests are in joining the water association. We have to sell people on our water association. Under Articles of Incorporation, we have two very important parts. One is that we choose to be members together and to protect our property and personal rights. We take that very seriously. So, to have a one-sided situation where we call the shots, we don't see that as a very smart engagement with people that are otherwise neighbors. We have to sell them on the capability of our system. The second part of our process is to make sure that as our system grows, we have a retail service area plan that's in seventh revision right now, we project when these water lines will be close enough to all of our valley residents that we can provide service. We're even considering in some areas to relinquish, considering, relinquish some of our declared service area, because we know we can never provide water in those areas. So, I agree with Mary Kay, and certainly Roger, that the code is perhaps a little bit too stiff. It needs a little bit of work. And that some of the work that we're doing in the Wise Qualcomm Water Association is consistent with what I've been hearing from other water associations, is planning for the future, so that when a need is requested, we are there with the line, the mainline distributions. If we go into an area where we know that six future shares will be sold, we'll plan on that in a construction year prior to it, or two years prior to it, so that we bring water to the individual when they need it. This is a different approach. This is the proactive way we've been doing business. So, I urge you to...let's take a moratorium on the code, and look to see what's going on, and ask some questions, and perhaps get a little bit more perspective before we march into this.
Ms. Brenner.
You have a...you talk about reasonable and all that, and do you have a distance that if someone's beyond that distance in the foreseeable future, that you say, "Yeah, you don't have to hook up now"?
Two answers, yes and no. We have one person that's 1,200 feet out, but we know that there's probably six shares that will be sold in that area in about three to five years. So, we work with that individual and say, "Can you wait three to five years?" And right now, the answer is yes. There is no areas that I know of, except for one, that we simply can't...we know that we can't reach it. It's another 800 feet higher in elevation, it's a completely different zone. So, that would be absolutely no, we can't go up there. Does that answer your question?
And so, you issue letters of denial on stuff like that?
Well, that's part of the process.
If it happened?
Yes. If that happens, again, we'll work with the landowner. If they have a private well and they feel comfortable with it, we'll certainly take that into consideration. And in some cases, which should be of note, is to press a private well into our system as a backup well. So, we've got a lot of ways that we're working this to ensure that the quality of water is there, the reliability and the capacities are there. We are unique in that we're in three watersheds. So, we're only operating out of one, but we may operate out of a second one. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Very well.
Any further discussion? Sorry, any further...Mr. Alisi.
Patrick Alisi, 4825 Alderson Road. I don't have any solutions for you. Yes, delay, think about this. I've talked to you years and years and years and years about water. I don't want to go through all that now. My mouth is dry just thinking about it. Now, I've said a long time ago that water is a resource. Water is not a weapon. Farmers, yes, they need to get together, they're beginning to, to figure out what their needs are. We've got houses on five-acre lots. I said a long time ago that, oh, well, most of their water goes back into the ground anyhow. But, you have water associations that actually take care of things, but if you get somebody in the middle that has its own well, then they won't want to join the water association. Makes everything else inefficient. I wish you a lot of luck with this. Now, I said before, water's not a weapon, but tonight, I had a feeling that somebody was using it as a weapon to attack into the rural areas, build their stuff, say, "Look, we've got to have some value there." Well, hey, they could buy Bitcoins. Well, okay, good luck.
All right, anybody else want to speak in the open public session on...sorry, I'm sorry. And it opens the public hearing for this particular ordinance. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And what is the wish of the council?
Move approval.
Mr. Byrd moves approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, and I'd like to say, prove it as an interim, so we can get more information to help us really fine-tune it. But as an interim, so we aren't allowing it to be used as a weapon. I'm going to remember that, Pat.
So, I don't have...I don't at this point have a second, because one has...unless you accept that as an interim.
As an interim.
Mr. Byrd.
I understand the question.
As an interim.
Yeah, you can do that. We still have a lot of discussion to do, at least I do.
No. I appreciate the amendment, but I'd like to see it move forward as it is.
So, at the moment, we have nothing. Does anybody else wish to?
Are you seconding it?
No, no, I'm not.
I did it first.
She already seconded it.
No, but she seconded it with it, but she changed it, and she can't do that.
Well, I'll still second it.
Okay, so you're seconding Mr. Byrd's original?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second, with Mr. Byrd as the motion maker and Ms. Brenner as the second. Any discussion? Mr. Sado.
So, for the benefit of the public, that we did had an executive session on this very topic, and we had very robust discussion, and it took us almost an hour. And a couple of points I want to make. First thing, that Mr. Whitaker said that council is trying to proceed without WOC. It's not true. We started with WOC in June, and we said, right away at that time, we said, "No, give them adequate time." So, we waited, said, end of September, and we are now in November. So, we did consider, and we are still considering, WOC, and we respect what they are trying to do, and we are still working with them. The other thing is, why WOC has not been able to come up with a solution? Because there is a problem. Now, even if Carusas withdraw the application or have the application, it doesn't matter, because what it's done is, it highlighted that how certain group of people are at a disadvantage, because there's no clarity of the water associations. The 200 water associations, they have a water service plan or retail service area, and they have no plan. Some people just say, "We have practices." Means, over the years, whatever we do, we have no written plan, and we have been going on like this. Look what happened when Hurst's decision came. The whole county was in this chambers, saying, "What an injustice being done." This is no different. People, they have their property, they have well.
Two.
Two wells. They're willing to work with that. Like, the biggest thing I fail to understand, what is the harm being done to Deer Creek Water Association? It's not been brought up, any which way, that doing this, this is the harm. One harm I could assume was that they would diminish...it would diminish their right to ask people to connect. And I think it has a validity. It does have a good validity, that if everybody wants exemption, what the heck water association is doing? So, the solution or talk we've been doing, and I think that is something that has been said in this council chambers a few times, that either it should be interim, or there should be conditional. And Carusas has...Mr. Carusa just defined that they're willing to write that, "When you are able to bring the water, we will connect. We will discontinue our wells, we'll connect." They will buy the water shares from the association, and they will actually pay whatever the monthly charges are. Like, if there was... Like, if there was a harm being done to the water association and their workings, I can understand that, that there is a resistance. Somehow, it has become kind of, everybody's dug their heels, and they say, I'm right and I'm right. To me, the purpose of water association is to facilitate providing water for the people in their area so they can enjoy their property. Like, facilitate, provide, not find ways how we can stop them. Somehow, somehow, that's what gives the feeling that, and I may not be privy to all the conversations and everything, somehow, it seems like the water association is trying to prohibit them from going to proceed and do their work, and that's not fair. That's not in the right spirit of the whole motto of providing water to people in their service area. I forget the name of the gentleman, he just mentioned that there is a situation in their water service areas, and they will issue that letter of denial or letter non-available, like, what is the big deal? And another thing, if it was a developer coming of the 50 lots or some other things and making financially gaining some business, I can understand what the association's stance that, look, they're going to come and do that, and they're going to hurt everything, and there are 50 potential people. In this situation, particular situation, probably in next 15 years, there may not be another two people who would want that water. So, that's what is really, I have not been able to understand what the resistance is for, and, okay, I will stop here, I want to give everybody else time, but I'm very passionate about it, I think this is not allowing somebody the liberty, life and pursuit of happiness, it's totally denying that.
Mr. Bird, then Mr. Donovan, then Ms. Brenner.
This situation bothers me greatly. When I look at this, it concerns me that we have a quasi-government organization such as a water association, and that they're able to act in what appears to be bad faith with zero oversight, zero transparency and zero accountability for what they do. And it's not just one single issue or one family or one association, but it's across the board that people have no accountability within these organizations, that their oversight is really to them and their current board members, even when they're able to push out their requirements on people who don't live within their current area of service but future areas of service and have no voting rights, and yet they're still able to look at those people and say, well, we know that you don't have the opportunity to come here and to make a difference or vote the current members of the board out, but you still have to pay us for our water at some point in time in the future if we decide. And by the way, we don't necessarily have to tell you how far in line you're going to be, or how much money that's going to cost, or when we can give you water, or anything else. That there is zero accountability, and that these associations are essentially left to their own control and are able to bully community members, and the only account, or only option a community member has is to go to Superior Court right now, where they're going to have to pay $100,000 and wait two or three years to be able to get service. That bothers me, and I think that it's not only a right of the council, but it's an obligation that we have to look at situations like this and say, we need to act on behalf of our community and do what's in the best interest of our community. And I believe that's the case with this example and all of the other examples that I've heard come forward here in the council meetings and outside as well. Whether we do this, I don't think that right or obligation stops here. I think that water associations need a lot more oversight and they need a lot more accountability, and I think that this is just becoming more transparent, and I think that if they don't get together and solve this problem, that we need to continue to put more transparency, to force them to have more transparency and more oversight. And they, I will echo what council members said earlier, which is, they were given this opportunity and they were given an extension, and for someone to come up here and say otherwise, that again goes forward in saying, that's bad faith and that's just a blatant lie. I'll leave it at that.
Ms. Donovan?
A couple of questions, first a comment. I think we all want this to work out, not just for this applicant, but for a policy where people can reasonably expect to get a denial of service letter, and apparently that's not happening, so there might be some bad actors out there in terms of how they deal with this stuff. In the previous meeting discussing this, I said, one of my worries was, we were waiting for the WOK. I think the WOK has been very clear, saying that's not their job, I appreciate the letter they sent. So that satisfies my comments like last time, that we don't need to wait for the WOK because they're basically saying, you know, that's not what they're able to do, they're not a regulatory body. My other concern was that this was, we were building a legislative record essentially saying that this is going to be for a particular water association and a particular applicant, and we're continuing to do this. I really appreciate Mr. Bird saying, this is not just one family, it's not just one association, I think I believe that, but we have had discussions just in the last couple of minutes here about the specific applicant and the person who helped write this proposal, and then the person who helped write this proposal just came up talking about representing that specific applicant. That's bad, we can't do that. So let's please, 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 let's talk like Mr. Bird is talking here and stop doing that, because we're digging ourselves into a hole. But even that, but I think Mr. Bird's right, I mean, this can be, this can be a bigger issue. But, so a question, like, is this just applying to properties that have existing wells, or is this applying to properties that don't have wells? Okay, so, I don't get that, so like, we're, I mean, the policy issue would be, you want a denial of service letter because you want to build a property and you want to like, drill a well if you can't, if you get a denial of service letter. This seems really tailored narrowly to like, okay, it's going to be only places that have existing wells, but we're doing this big broad policy thing. I don't know how we distinguish that, like, we should open it up, and I don't want to do this, but we should open, if we're really trying to solve this policy issue in a broad sense, then anybody who does not have an existing well, who's out of the service area, then, you know, that would make it look less tailored to me, but also it would look like, that's not really good policy, I think. So it is just specifically for places that have existing wells, and we're talking about this specific association, and we're talking about the specific applicants, we're really narrowing it down. But I think it's, I mean, I actually, and to Roger, I like the policy, I wish every association out here did something like this. 500 feet is crazy expensive, so I can get past, you know, this isn't just about one parcel and one water association, but we're not really, you know, we're opening up, how do we just discriminate between people with existing wells and not existing wells? How do we discriminate between not municipal water suppliers and districts and treat them differently? I just don't, I don't get that. But, but also, this is, I guess my main thing is like, and I've been asking, where is our county's regulatory authority to say what the state is going to define in terms of what's timely, what's reasonable, what water association is going to do? That's, and I don't know if I can put our council up here to ask that, but that's what I'm not, I don't see in our jurisdiction, the ability to tell a water association or even a municipal water supplier what they're supposed to do. And if somebody can show me that other counties do that, and can show me that we have the regulatory ability to do that, I can get past this other stuff, but, but then, like, then are we opening up, it's not just going to be existing wells, because then the people that don't have wells, why would they think that they should be treated differently? They're going to come to us and say, hey, you can't just do this for people with existing wells, and then we're going to like torpedo the whole thing we're doing with the Hearst fix decisions. So, I think there's a lot more moving parts here than some folks are realizing, and maybe someone can inform me about where are legal regulatory authorities to define what's in state law, but I'm speaking against the motion, I guess, lengthfully.
Ms. Brenner, then Mr. Sudut, then Mr. Bird.
Well, you've brought up a lot of important things, but to say, I'm speaking against the motion without hearing from everybody else about why you should not speak against the motion, I think is kind of sad, because I'd like you to keep an open mind about this. This has been supported and worked on by, I would say, the top land use attorney in Wauken County, who I don't know anybody from municipalities to environmental groups to everybody, who doesn't say this is the best attorney around. And he was a county attorney, and he was the council's attorney, and he has made, we did get this, I hope everybody got it, I know I did. He lists all kinds of reasons, and it kind of bothers me that, you know, that if we're going to, I mean, if we go forward with this, I think this is the kind of person, the kind of land use attorney we should have, you know, doing this, and I was really sorry when he left, because he's somebody, who could think, everybody can trust a land use attorney? Well, this is the guy, I mean, he's just amazing. So, I am totally in support of this. If you want to do it as an interim, I can support that, but to just say, you know, the only person, unbelievable how the person representing Deer Creek was like, oh, they're a victim. They're no victim, the victim is the person who's being treated arbitrarily and capriciously and has a weapon used against them, rather than trying to work with the people in their service area or future service area, which is way down the road, and make things work. This didn't have to come to this, it is not our fault, it did. I mean, they could have and should have issued a letter of denial, and I think it's time for us to stand up for people who need this, and I trust that what we're doing is completely legal.
Ms. Sudut, then Mr. Bird.
I think Mr. Donovan has given me an excellent idea, and thanks for illustrating your point of view. And as I read the letter from Mr. Whitaker, the last line with the red thing, it does say, as of the passing of this ordinance, the applicant has adequate and legal water supply for each use. What I read here is that Deer Creek Water Association management is open and willing to come up with some kind of help or compromise to make it right. That's how I'm reading it. So my proposal to the rest of the council is, and to Deer Creek Water Association is, if they can take this particular case and make a resolution like it would have never come to us in that manner, that solves that issue that we are trying to work on a particular person, particular issue, particular water association. But at the same time, I would request the council that we should, we should continue to work with WOK, they have, they are coming, trying to come up with an appendix to, as a recommendation, which we should take, and then we should deal with all the water associations, even if we have to go through the State Department of Health, let's do that, because this has highlighted an issue, but it has two kind of levels of it. One level is what brought the issue up. If the interested parties are willing to get that resolution, and that gets behind us and relieves the council to come up with something which seems like that we are trying to help one person, but this one person or one case has highlighted something much bigger, and we should deal with that bigger part of it. So, I would like to see that if water association and them, they need a couple of weeks to work this out and send us a letter, that solves that problem, but we should not stop on this. We should then take it out that we have a prescription, for lack of my word, that we should come up with a consistency document which we should share with all the water associations, that when you draw your water service plan, you must meet these five or 10 or seven terms, or address these things, in addition to your common practices, however you have been doing. And at the same time, we can approach the State Health Department and get their blessing, and then include it in our comp plan and get it thus done forever, because this has been going on since 70s. And I see that we have an opportunity to solve this issue, and this would require a cooperation from Deer Creek Water Association Management and their board to look into and serve a much bigger purpose than just one issue.
Mr. Bird, and then myself.
Councilmember Donovan, I would be open to kind of broadening that out so that it was less specific. I'd also be opening to shortening the distance so incorporated more people. Further, I would say, I would agree that I think it's a bigger issue, I think we're all on the same page when it comes to that, and this is possibly one of those areas where, again, we look for outside legal counsel that specializes in land use and water, and ask them to come in, and in doing so, that we look at the issues of specifically what is timely and how does the council address what will be timely within our jurisdiction, and how we'll define that and what is reasonable, and then also transparency, and see, how do we get these organizations to be fully transparent to not just their members currently, but their future service members as well, so that everyone's on the same page and that they act as we all have to with full honesty and transparency. As far as your question about what authority do we have, I think that our authority comes from a number of areas. I'm not an attorney, obviously, but the fact that every one of these associations is required to bring to us their plans to ensure that we prove them, saying they are in compliance with our comp plan, says that we have the right to update our comp plan in a way that forces them to update their plans to be in compliance with us. And so, I think the same thing happens when you start looking at the water system plan itself, and then when you start getting into some of the codes specifically, like the Public Water Systems Coordinated Act here, which says, RCW 70.116, the public water service plan places no limit on the extent to which the county may amend the CWSP. I think we have a lot of areas that we can work within this and that we can move forward, but in doing so, I think we need to make that investment in our community so that this doesn't come back to us again, and that it's very clear and that they're holding a very high standard moving forward.
Okay, so, Mr. Bird, I share, let me tell you what I share with you is...
Tilt?
No, no, we've already worked it, you're too young to use that word. So I absolutely, I believe that the water associations have a duty to serve or to promptly deny service. I believe they've got a duty to maintain a healthy association, a healthy board, and a healthy capital fund, because what happens is if a water association fails because of a lack of board management or a lack of financial planning, what happens is the county has to take them over, and therefore the citizens, yes they do under state law, the county, the county is the last manager or body responsible of last resort. So we would have to take them over, we would have to run them properly and then do assessments on the owners. I believe that the operation of the water association should be transparent, and there should be oversight where it's necessary. And I want to be clear, I support the outcome of this ordinance. I think that if a water association is not willing to provide service under reasonable terms, and reasonable terms to me would include a reasonable, a point where the cost of service is too high to put on the burden of a single landowner because of distance, I support that outcome, absolutely do support that outcome. But what I do not support is the process that we are going through now. I don't believe we should be doing this by ordinance, and what I would support is a resolution from the council, instructing staff to tell us the right process to do this as rapidly as possible, sticking with all, within all the respective state laws. Ms. Brenner.
If we were even going to ask for advice, it should be from somebody who's extremely astute about this. We go out on contracts all the time for people who have that expertise, and I don't want, no offense to our staff, I don't want to hear from our staff anymore. I want to, I want to make sure that we get to do this, it's already written on how we can do it. The other thing is, another water association can take over that association, it's not just automatically go to the county, it doesn't have to. It could be another water association that does that, some of them have done that already in the past. It's, you can't have it both ways, either... Either, they're, either they're doing just fine, everything's okay, or they're not, and at some point, we, I am so convinced this is legal because of who in the legal field has, has supported it. I have no doubt about it. But to, you know, to keep, oh, I really want this to happen, but, I really want this to happen, but, it just seems like we go on and on and on with the butts. I'm sick of the butts.
So, Ms. Brenner, for clarification, if a water association fails, I fully acknowledge that another water association could agree to take them over, whether they failed or not, if it was by the consent of the, of the shareholders of the first water association. But if a water association fails and another water association doesn't step up and wants to take them over with the consent of the owners of the first water association, if that first water association fails, the county is obligated to take it over and to run it under state law.
You didn't put that clause in the first time you said it. That's why I want to make sure.
Okay, well, I'm providing, I'm providing clarification of my statement.
I provided that.
All right. Is there further, Mr. Sedo?
If the, Mr. Whitaker feels comfortable, I would like to ask that, that is he even willing to consider something like this, that they can reconsider and work with that applicant to, to take care of this one case? Because as I see, they have issued denial letters to 12 property owners, and, and they have done that in the past. And, and, and if he needs to take it back to his board and everything, I totally understand, and we can, like, this is not something that we have to decide tonight. I'm not really in a rush. But I rather concentrate our energy and our time on the bigger issue than, and, and that eliminates the biased part of it, too. So if you guys allow that, that I would like to request Deer Creek Water Association to take a week or two weeks or whatever till next meeting, if they can write us a letter, that they can mitigate this particular thing, but we should continue our work with WOK and, and bring the clarity to all the water associations and similar cases without saying 1,200 feet or 800 feet, because it will vary. It will vary like the elevation itself. If the thing is 300 feet up in the air, it could be only 200 feet away. Now, who's going to put that $20,000 pump to do that and maintain that? So, so each situation may be unique, and I'm looking for a, a, a solution which fits that applicant and the water association, because I would totally agree that they need to retain their right to, for people to connect, because that's not fair, that take that right away from them. So, so there is a compromise here that we can do, but we should continue our work through WOK and through State Health Department and clean this water association, water system plans for everybody, and make it consistent. Would Mr. Whitaker like to say something? I mean, I'm not forcing you. Yes, if you are willing to, please, we would like to know your feelings.
Member, I'm grateful for the chance. In the handouts that I gave you, we've been approached by five separate developers over the last couple of years who have asked us for financial participation with their developments. Five came away with participation or offers from us. We had hoped, I had hoped all along that I would be six of six with helping, and I would love to sit down with the Carusas and make that six of six right now if they'd be willing to speak without their attorney. I'd, I'd be grateful for the chance.
Yeah, we don't want, I, sorry, I just want to make one comment. We don't want to be in the middle of that, because if you guys are talking on that, we, we will continue, if we have to do that, we have to do through, through our ordinance, if it passes or don't pass, that's up to council, right? I'm, I'm not really suggesting, but if you, I, I just thought that it could be a good way to, to mitigate that one thing, but continue with this bigger issue.
I would love that chance to meet with them.
Thank you.
Um, you know, to say right off the bat, to meet with them without their attorney, you have an attorney at your beck and call, and to say that they can't do the same, I don't, to me, that's, again, treating somebody different than, than you guys. You're the big boys, they're not. And I just, I, I appreciate what you're saying, I hope you mean it, because I would love to see this settled where we don't even have to get in the middle of it and we can work on the bigger issue. But this is such a, to me, this is so obscene, that this has been going on so long, and that we had to come to this point before you even came to talk to us. I don't trust you, so...
I, I appreciate your comments. I think you may have misunderstood. When there's a lawsuit, you generally don't speak without your councils. In this opportunity to satisfy your colleagues' comment, I would love the chance to meet with them face to face. I would not have my attorney, they would not. It's a dialogue face to face. And the reason I haven't come to talk is, in a lawsuit, you generally don't air your laundry in public, and we have chosen not to do that.
Ms. Brenner?
Never mind.
Okay.
I'll say the wrong thing, I'm sure.
Mr. Donovan, did you have a question for this?
I was just going to observe that this is not Superior Court.
No, and, and I, I was trying to find the right opportunity to point out it's not typical for an individual council member to ask someone to come up and, and speak. The normal process we've always followed is for that to be run through the chair. It's, it's, it's to seek permission from the chair.
I can apologize, I'm sorry.
No, no.
No, no, I'm, I, I understand the protocol, that's why I'm saying that, that I just wanted to make a suggestion, because there's a bigger issue to deal with, not this.
Um, thank you. Madam Clerk? Yeah, thank you, so, okay. Madam, Madam Clerk, you, I wasn't quite clear of the message you just sent me.
I was just going to say if this does get postponed, it would be better for the December meeting rather than the next meeting where we have 10 hearings.
Oh, I see, okay, fine, all right. Ms. Brenner?
Well, um, I appreciate what everybody's saying, it's just, we've got some good legal advice, and I don't want to, we didn't want to make this like a lawsuit, which, but we've been told already that you guys have threatened a lawsuit, so...
Sorry, no side conversation, please.
Oh, finally, it wasn't me.
Please proceed, Ms. Brenner.
My turn today.
Please proceed.
I didn't even, I wasn't even paying attention to what you said.
I'm, I'm, I'm an equal opportunity bad guy.
Yeah. Well, so I, you know, this whole thing about threatening a lawsuit came from the Deer Creek Water Association. It didn't come from us, and we're, we have tried real hard. I think we've reached out, we've had public meetings and everything on this, and I think we've reached out a lot. I don't want to wait.
Further discussion? Okay, again, I would speak against this, but would the clerk please call the roll? Yes, because it's been put in as an ordinance, so, yeah, all right.
I just have a question. If we vote against it means we are getting rid of this, think?
Well, if we vote against it, it's then completely open for council members to suggest an alternative, and I would personally like to propose, if this fails, as I hope it does, that it's replaced with a resolution to instruct staff to come back and tell us how to do this properly.
Why don't we postpone it for, for weeks and, and then get the WOK information and everything, like, what is the rush?
So to postpone it, I'd have to have a motion which is adopted to postpone it, because at the moment I have a motion on the floor. If you want to make a motion to postpone...
Yes, I would like to make a motion.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I, I make a motion that we should keep this ordinance in, in the council for another four weeks, and then once we get the more information from WOK, they are working on it, and we get more information from Deer Creek Association, and then accordingly we take it up, maybe in, in a month, we just dispose it. But disposing it today doesn't solve anything. Why did we spend like three months, six months on this thing? And now today we just vote against it and get rid of it? We want to have a solution.
I'm going to vote for it.
You can vote for it.
No, but if, if it fails, you two vote for it, it fails, then your voting for it doesn't ma, mean anything.
No, then I'm going to vote to hire an attorney.
Well, evil still, that still needs seven people.
So...
There is something already there that which we can, we can delay.
Correct, the correct process is to vote, vote to hold.
Yes, so I propose that we should hold it in committee for, for four weeks, at the maximum, four weeks.
So we have a motion on the floor to hold it, sorry, I need a second. So do I have a second for the motion to hold it on the floor for four weeks?
Yes, I'll, no, I'm not going to, because I don't want to wait.
No?
You're not.
So, so everybody understands the procedure. If Mr. Sedo's motion fails, we go back to the original motion to vote on the ordinance tonight. Is that the wishes of the council? All right, I'm sorry, Mr. Sedo, your motion...
That's fine, I, I tried.
Actually, you know what, I'll second your motion, let's see if, so, I, I second the motion to hold in committee for four weeks.
Okay.
Discussion.
Discussion, Mr. Bird.
Thank you. What?
It's your turn, Mr. Bird.
I just, procedural, do we have two separate motions or does the motion...
The motion to hold supers, the motion to hold superseds.
That's what I was trying to figure.
My motion is on the table right now.
Yeah, so your motion, motion to, a motion to hold in committee superseds the motion, the main motion.
Yes.
So, Mr. Bird, it's your, it's your time to speak.
I could support that as if, when it came back to us, that it came back with possible legal counsel and the cost of outside legal counsel, so we know how to move forward with a specialized water attorney that could help us craft this well.
We are in the discussion, right? Now, the way I understood from our...
Mr. Sedo, yeah, go ahead.
But the way I understood from our executive session, that our legal counsel has given us a process that, that we can follow if we have time and if we are not dealing with one particular thing, which, so there were two things going on in here. But what we heard is, is that we have referred it to WOK, WOK is working on it, they have another meeting in next couple of weeks, they're going to come up with their, their recommendation, that's why I'm wanting it to hold in committee. Once we get their recommendation, and we will know if this particular case is getting any resolution or not, either way, then we get to decide what we're going to do. We can know that cost at that time, that if we have to get an outside attorney, or what is the possibility of somebody suing us, means that some water association comes and says county has done wrong, then we dispose this off. Disposing it off today doesn't help anything.
Ms. Brenner?
Um, twice now, you've brought up what we talked about in executive session. I don't think that's proper, but if you're going to keep going there, I'm going to bring up all kinds of stuff we talked about in executive session, because you're making it sound like we have this other thing and, and everybody, you know, and we got this expert advice and all this stuff. I'm, I'm not going any further, but I don't think it's proper what you're doing that, doing it that way.
Bird?
The, so, I think when I asked, and, and we gave the WOK until the end of September back in June or July, whenever it was, to, to come up with the solution on their own, I was pretty clear on what my thought process was on that, and that is, that as peers, if they can come and self-regulate themselves and come and solve those problems of what is transparent, and how do we become more transparent for our community members, what is timely and what is reasonable, that that would be my preferred method, but that if they couldn't do that, then it was left to us to do it for them. And so, within that same train of thought, I would say, we move forward with hiring a very, very good attorney to do this for us, and we begin to research what that process is. And if, say, some amazing miracle, they're able to get back to us before we can get that done and have solved those three problems, then I'm more than happy to move forward with the WOK's recommendations. But I don't want to stop and wait for them, knowing that they haven't met any of the obligations that they've already set for themselves and that we've already been waiting on. So I can put this and postpone it for 30 days, so long as we're simultaneously moving forward with additional efforts.
Ms. Brenner, and then me. Ms. Brenner?
Um, well, I think there's a little bit of a legal thing here. I don't know that we can require outside legal advice. I think that has to come to, from the prosecutor's office. I might be wrong. And I'm not com, I'm not comfortable if it doesn't come from us, what?
How'd it happen with the Cherry Point Moratorium?
Uh, we, it did come.
Agreeable to that. There is a process where if the prosecutor's office isn't agreeable to it, the council can go to Superior Court and get permission. We've never done that, but...
Okay. That process, I'm okay with working the process, I just want to move forward. Yeah, I got it.
Ms. Brenner finished? It's my turn. Mrs. Sedo is the maker of the motion, I ask you if you'd accept a friendly amendment, and, which is, I'd like to restate the motion, is a motion to hold in, in the committee of the whole until December 4th, and it's the four weeks, isn't it? Is that's our next meeting, correct? And request staff slash elite county council's legal counsel to provide us a report on the correct legal process and limits of our authority to regulate water associations.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
All right. Do you want me to repeat that, or?
Can you read it again?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just stating...
I, I, I'm clear with that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make it very clear, including dates, date certain, and which, which part of the council is doing this, which was why the mention of the committee of the whole. Ms. Brenner?
Well, I'm not comfortable with it, because I think we need someone who, who is really astute in water law to do this and not simply have staff come and tell us their opinion. I think we need it from, and we're not going to get that unless we, that's part of the deal.
I, I will just take peremption on this. If we are to going to direct county council's legal staff, first off, I don't believe we can unitarily just direct, arbitrarily direct them.
I know.
And if we do direct them, we will have to provide budget for it, because...
Yes.
So, Mr. Sedo?
I, I was going to say the same thing. That's, we always have that opportunity to get outside legal advice, we're not giving that up by going to December 4th. We always have that, and we can exercise that at any time. So I'm, I'm not giving that up, but I'm saying that let's get what prosecutor's office wants to devise, how we should go, I mean, we should have it in writing, so then we know what to do next.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, I disagree, we cannot, the council does not have the authority to get outside legal advice unless the prosecutor's office agrees to, to, to recommend it. That's the only...
That's what I'm asking.
Well, that's what she said, so we're not, we're not automatically able to do it.
So that's the motion, it's been accepted, the amendment has been accepted by the maker of the motion.
Yes, I accept the amendment.
Is there any further discussion on the motion to hold, Mr. Donovan?
Can I just hear the motion one more time?
No.
Can I hear the motion one more time?
The motion is to hold this ordinance in, in the committee of the whole until December 4th, and in the, and to request staff, county staff slash county council legal staff to provide us a report on the correct legal process and limits of our authority to regulate water associations. Mr. Donovan?
I guess my only, I, I, I think I can support that, but I'm not sure how much, so we want a public statement from our legal counsel about our exposure to what we might get sued for?
No, no, I, I want to know that, I actually like the outcome of what the guy's trying to do. I don't like the process, I think the process is flawed. I want us to understand what is our authority to even tell a water association what to do at this point. I'm not clear we have any.
I agree with that, I'm just, okay, yeah.
Yeah. Ms. Brenner?
Well, again, I feel like some of you are just trying to have it both ways. Oh, we really care, we really care, but we're not able to do it. And I'm not saying what our, our legal people would say, but I have a, you know, I have an opinion, and we may not be able to get outside legal advice. And I don't want us to be in that situation. So you can't, on something like this... you can't, on something like this, to try to have it both ways, you have it neither way, and, and I don't, I just don't like what's happening here.
One of my concerns, by the way, is that if I can, matter, Ms. Franks, please correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is we ended up with 23 or 24 violations of the Growth Management's Hearings Board, in part because the, the Growth Management Hearings Board had found that the council had incorrectly interpreted the law and exceeded its authority, and we had, we spent considerable amount of money fixing things, is that a fair statement? I, I think I got the number from you, a couple of years ago, but anyway, but the point is, is that when we go out, when we go, get ahead of our skis legally, we end up incurring costs on behalf of the citizens to fix them, fix our mistakes, and so I don't want to do that again with this. I wanna get it right, Ms. Brenner.
Well, you, again, you're just in your own way saying, oh, if there's a threat of a lawsuit and if, you know, we're, we're letting, we're letting staff tell us what we can and can't do, not just give us advice, but tell us what we can and can't do, and I don't think that's right. We're supposed to make the decisions.
Further discussion on the motion to hold.
What's the difference between what you're asking for and what we did today?
Exactly.
I was legal today for an hour and had this conversation, so I, I don't understand what we are asking.
I, well, I personally walked out of the room being confused and uncertain as to what the limits of our authority were, and my understanding is that they looked confused because this is not an area of law that they're accustomed to dealing with.
So, you, you, I can't hear you. So, going back into the room with the same people, does that make sense, or should we get people that specialize in it then, if everyone's confused?
Well, my, my, well, the first thing we have to do is tell them specifically what questions we want answered. I'm, I'm confident that the county council's legal staff will either be able to do the research, or will admit that they don't have the skill and recommend that we hire someone to do it for us. We can't use the person mis...
I understand that.
Brenner has suggested, because that person is already representing another party, and they would have to recuse themselves by law.
I understand.
Mr. Sedoux.
I was gonna say that the additional thing, what we get in next four weeks is, is what WOK comes back with. I mean, they, they, that is a, a legal entity which is supposed to be the advising committee for all water associations, and we engage them into this process, now, we can't cut, just cut short that, and, and we should hear from them. If it takes another two weeks for them to come up with that, let's do that, and at the same time, staff needs time, what is the rush that we have to do something tonight? We have to do it right, but not tonight.
Further, further discussion on the motion to hold. Seeing none at all in favor of the motion to hold, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That passes all eyes down here, that passes five to two, with Bird and Brenner opposed, and with that, we have disposed of the ordinance for four weeks. Next item up is the open session, and during the open session, audience members will have up to three minutes to address the council on any issue relevant to county business. Before beginning to comment, please state your name and topic of interest for the record. If your last name is something other than Smith or Jones, please speak it, and spell it for the clerk, please, at your option, identify your city of residence, and please make sure to speak into the microphone. Please stand behind the signs located in the aisles as a courtesy of the speakers. And again, I would, I would like to see both podiums full, and you, and the person in the podium who is not speaking is wa, waiting, waiting for the person in the podium who is speaking to finish, and that way we'll use our time efficiently for the benefit of everybody. Please start.
Good evening, council. Happy post-election day, and let's celebrate the fact that almost 74% of our registered voters voted, and let's hope it's better even the next time around. So, I've come here to talk a little bit about the fact that it seems like, unfortunately, all of us at the local level are dealing with a variety of crises on many, many fronts, and you're having to bear the brunt of it, and those of us that are paying attention to this are also bearing the brunt of these things. You have a board that advise you, advises you on climate impacts, you have obviously all kinds of discussions going on about water, there's an affordable housing crisis, there's homeless people in the thousands in this county, and the housing board is helping you out with things, and now, the county health department and the Wacom Food Network, among others, are recommending that you form a new board or advisory board, having to do with food systems within the county. So I'm actually speaking about the ordinance to establish this food system committee, and what I would say at this point, besides all the wherashes that are in that ordinance that have already been stated, part of the problem that we have is, is that most of the individuals that are involved in the food system, and if you define that all the way from farm to table, most of the people that are in that are being impacted because they're either very poverty-stricken themselves, and/or they are being abused within the system, like farm workers, as an example. So, I personally know of at least, and all the other things that I mentioned that are crises are actually intersecting with each other, and I personally know at least six cooks in this county that are living in their vehicles because they make so little money that they can't afford a place to live. I know homeless individuals that are having problems finding water on a regular basis. Individuals that are living maybe not in the traditional homeless sense out on the streets, but as you all know, they're living in motels, or living in RVs, or camped out in the woods, whatever the case may be, and they're also struggling to get food, and there are some individuals that are making...
Thirty seconds, please.
Making so little amount of money that literally they can't afford to go to the grocery store if there is one in the neighborhood, okay, but they make too much to get food stamps, okay? So we've got crises going on all over the place, and yes, I think that you should approve the formation of this committee, however, you need to use the information that they come up with to try and do something, and there needs to be a sense of urgency about what's going on, okay?
Time.
We can't sit on top of it like we have too many other things, not necessarily your fault, but we've gotta keep moving forward.
Please state your name for the court.
Sorry. Dana Briggs, and living in Bellingham at large.
Hi, good evening, my name's Ivy Little, and I live in Kendall, Washington. I'm here tonight, Devon's gonna pass out the package I have. I am here for the second full-time deputy patrol in the area of more law enforcement covering during the hours of two regular department of deputies are not working. Additional street lights are needed in our residential area to demean crime and include patrol safety of our residents. We are, we are the county to install additional 100 street lights already existing on poles in our neighborhood, we are willing to supply the poles, power poles located of our industrial, of our streetlights, removing a large assessment of garbage waste. There are health problems of white properties and mold and garbage and human waste, the abandoned vehicles and trailers. This problem is occurring to grow health problems because of the abundance of rodents, wild animals, and feral dogs and other varmints who are living and thriving in the garbage. The Wacom County Health Department has been slow in occurring this, correcting this problem. We, we trust that additional problems to allow the county health department code, code enforcement to clean up white properties and charge it to the people that have the property. Also, Deputy Jason has told me up in Kendall area, there's a more problem now with fentanyl being used up there. Fentanyl is a drug, it was in 1959 that the Department of Drug Enforcement, Drug Association has used and into the 60s. So, with this problem of fentanyl being up there in here, it's causing more drug problems, more crime, more people that are ODing, and it's a real threat, and I didn't realize how heavy that's become. And also in there, I have a package of 117...
Thirty seconds, please.
People that have signed for help for enforcement, and thank you guys for being here, and hope you have a good evening.
Ms. Little, would you, would you, I'll give you this, would you please email me, because I think I can answer some of your questions?
Email all of us, please, but I would, you, we had a meeting discussing the, the extra deputy thing today, I think you should listen to it, it's, it's available audio.
Okay. Thank you.
Please go ahead, and then, next one, please move forward, thank you.
Good evening, council, my name is Robert McLeod, 9226 Barclay area. I'm a construction craft laborer with Local 292. I would like you to know that when my representative from the laborers' union, any of my representatives from the labor union, speak with you, they're speaking for me. Whenever one of my brothers or sisters from the laborers' union speak with you, they are speaking for me. They're speaking for my wife, they're speaking for a huge majority of our family who are also laborers, whether they be from Ferndale, Linden, Demming, Kendall, Everson. My wife and I have a lot of family all over Wacom County. Be as laborers, are one, united, an injury to one is an injury to all, whether from Wacom, Skagit, or Snohomish County, or the couple I worked with this spring from Florida, we are one. Thank you.
Ken Calder, Point Roberts, I'd like to thank you all for your service, tonight's been great seeing the passion, slightly entertaining, but getting back to garbage in Point Roberts, major question is, why did the Wacom County Health Department's staff ask our curbside provider to postpone his rate review? A copy of an article from the All Point Bulletin, Point Roberts' local paper quotes the provider, Mr. Galatley saying that Wacom County Health Department asked him to postpone his rate review. Why would the health department do that and, and slow down a process that would keep him viable? There is a link that we have for the audio of that, that I can forward, we have forwarded the All Point Bulletin article to you in an email this evening. A simple rate review and an increase of 18% the UTC just came up with a month ago would have, would make him a viable company. Here we are with being taxed, fee on our taxes, unique to everywhere else in Wacom County, why are we being subjected to this? I don't understand it. We have processes in place that are just being totally ignored. It works everywhere else in the county, why wasn't that simple rate review allowed to happen in Point Roberts two years ago, when the company was still making money? We've provided his financials in one form or another a few times. Here's the most recent, with a few graphs. It, it's, we have sent in so much information, we all have full-time jobs, we could, we missed a committee meeting one afternoon because we were misled by the advisor, the, the chair of Jeff Christopher of the Point Roberts Advisory Committee, told the meeting started at 1:30, our mistake, we didn't check, check the agenda. Border lineup made me 10 minutes late, I got here at 1:40, oh, I find out looking at the agenda, my mistake, I missed that one. That one, put it through to council that night, it wouldn't have been introduced if two, the two of us had shown up then, it would have been two and two, and it would have been held over for more discussion, but no, then it gets rammed through, and there was 400 signatures on a petition that was presented, ignored. Our garbage NPR's efforts, another survey with double the answers, double the, the people responding, over 700, and the numbers are still the same. This system doesn't work for Point Roberts, it deserves better. You need to do something about this before it ends up on our taxes, please.
Please proceed.
Allison Calder, again, Point Roberts. The paperwork that I actually just handed to you, I handed it to you for the fact of, you will see there's a graph on the front, then there's a basic financial spreadsheet. Attached to that is the UTC filings for Can Do Freedom 2000 for 2014, 15, 16, 17, so that you can tell that the numbers that we've actually placed in the graph are correct. When I talked to the UTC, the UTC bases their review only on the last year of financials, when I pointed out that there is a variance in the financials, a significant discrepancy, that the revenue decreased where the tonnage increased. When you have a business that's linear, that doesn't make sense. They said, well, we did quickly look at that, the difference between the revenue and the tonnage is in unregulated revenue, which is the county's responsibility. So, there's a $70,000 discrepancy between the tonnage and the revenue, but because it falls under unregulated revenue, that is an audit to be done by the county. And as well, when they do the review, he said they are having to estimate and guesstimate, because right now, according to the ordinance, 2,100 people are going to have their garbage picked up every other week. They do not have any data for that, so they have to presume that you are correct, and that 2,100 people are going to have their garbage picked up every two weeks, so they have to guesstimate what the expense is going to be, because they have no hard financial data. Because there's not been any rate reviews, there hasn't been anything current, you're basically guessing that 1,800 homes have now just moved into Point Roberts. They know that they, he's not picking up that much garbage in January, February, March, but because the ordinance states that that's gonna happen, that's how they have to base the tariff, which is totally false. The contract between the county and Can Do states that Can Do will bill for January and February, between March 1st and March 15th, no later than March 15th, on a net 30. So, for 2019, he is going to bill the county for January and February, between March 1st, March 15th, due and payable by the county between April 1st and April 15th. We don't pay our property taxes until April 30th. What county fund is he going to be being paid out of? Because we will not have paid our taxes.
Thirty seconds, please.
So, again, I ask that the council rescind this ordinance until a full review can be done, with an option for a Point Roberts collection district, because we have brought, I think, enough proof forward, that this has gone through way too fast. There has not been enough oversight, because also inside of that contract, he gets paid one-sixth every two months, with no financial oversight from the county...
Time.
To see that he has actually provided the service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
Since Regina's here, that's my third question, I gave you those other questions, I wanna know if the health department did tell them not to, you know, to, to wait, and, and if they did, why? Because we heard that today.
Just a procedural question, Madam Clerk, I remember we delayed this process, but I don't see it on tonight's agenda or next, next agenda.
Delayed, what? Sorry.
The, the issue of the solid waste in Point Roberts. Something for us to vote on, there's nothing for us to vote on tonight?
No.
And there's, there's, hmm?
Well, we could, I'll make a motion.
And there's nothing, there's nothing on the agenda for next, the next meeting?
I don't believe so.
Okay, all right, sorry, I'll talk, I'll talk to you offline.
Good evening, council members, I've enjoyed the passion from tonight's proceedings, I'm actually my first attendance at a county council meeting. My name's John Yakowicz, I live up in Blaine, Washington, I just wanted just a brief moment to introduce myself as a applicant, I believe you've received my resume, application for the Wacom Climate Impact Advisory Committee, and just in the interest of transparency, and you have the information as well, but though I do work for BP, the Cherry Point Refinery, I apply as a concerned and motivated citizen to, to partake, but been living out here for three... I've been living out here for three years, graduated Montana State as a chemical engineer, and looking forward to, if I have the opportunity, and appreciate your consideration to participate more in local government. And thank you all so for what you do.
Oh, excuse me. What was your name?
John Yakowicz.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Good evening. My name is Brianna Zamora. Thank you for giving me the time to express my concerns. I'm a proud member of Laborers Local two-nine-two, which is on State Street here in Bellingham. This ongoing testimony that we have started having a couple of times a month with you all has become an important conversation with council and those of us from labor. Last night's election results on initiative sixteen thirty-one statewide and here in Wacom County sent an important message that I feel needs your attention. When protecting the environment to not go too far, too fast, and make sure you can demonstrate actual benefit, existing Cherry Point regulations have served this county and Cherry Point well for many years. There is no need for the dramatic changes you are proposing. Protecting the environment and public safety are vitally important, but an anti-fossil fuel agenda that moves too fast negatively affects our quality of life, like having a job, declining tax revenue that we need to fund school, county services, and public safety will raise the IRA voters. Please stop and consider the wants and needs of all of your constituents before making any changes at Cherry Point.
Hi, my name's Hannah. I work with the, I'm with the Laborers Local two-nine-two also. All my union brothers and sisters are environmentalists. Those of us in the building trades are on the front lines of implementing many of the regulations and procedures that protect of, protect our air and water, and that includes our work at Cherry Point. I know that you are working with industry to understand the highly technical processes you are attempting to increasingly regulate at Cherry Point. I highly encourage you to spend the time and work closely with Cherry Point companies so you can fully understand the impact you are, your proposed changes. How you treat current Cherry Point industries will impact our ability to attract the green industries of tomorrow to Wacom County. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Bob Gay. Suburbs at Demming out there at Nugent's Corner, which happens to be kind of a food wasteland right now, too. I was spoiled for a lot of years. Anyway, I'm here to, as a business representative for International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local one-nine-one, and I wanted to speak on the Cherry Point Comp Plan and the language changes. Again, we know that you are, have reached out to industry, and we wanted you to encourage you to do that and, you know, take heed. You know, during the election cycle here, everybody talks about family wage jobs. It's, it's on everybody's lips. It doesn't seem to matter what party. And, you know, that's all great. And we have them there at Cherry Point. These industries, and when I spoke last time, my career's, you know, forty-five years in now, it's, you know, they've got a lot of guys starting out. We need to continue this. We need to have a place for our guys to work. There's, we have two hundred electricians out there right now, and we'll have more. You've got all the other trades. By next spring, there'll be probably several thousand craftsmen working in preparation for their shutdown, the completion of their coker heater and like that. You know, I don't know what the percentage of their projects over the years have been, but a lot of them are all, for electrical anyway, they're, they all have to do with emissions and that. These are important jobs. That thing was a hundred thousand barrel a day refinery the first time I set foot on it, and I think it's at about two hundred and forty thousand. And that crude unit, it hasn't really grown all that much. I mean, they've added tankage and they've mostly taken bottlenecks out, efficiencies, you know, but these are important. Like I said, so when you're working on that language, just wanted you to make sure you preserve what you can. We don't want to be the first one to turn the lights out. It'd be nice to keep those things around a few years, so. And like I said, the voters seem to have spoken on sixteen thirty-one that there's still a place for the fossil fuels, and why not, why not here? So they're here now. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Adam Lamb, L-A-M-B-E. I live at three-five-one Martin Street in Blaine. I'm here tonight to talk to you guys about the Cherry Point Moratorium. I was pleasantly surprised that the vote for sixteen thirty-one failed. There's an important lesson to be learned here. If you overreach on policy in the name of environment, the vote, the voters will see it for what it is. Overreaching, as was done with this initiative, damages the environment, environmental cause, and ultimately the environmental, the environment itself, because it breeds cynicism and it makes people not trust what you guys say. Sixteen thirty-one is a cautionary tale for you all. There's a certain self-righteous arrogance that you may get sucked into in regards to the environmental policy. Many of you on the council need to stop and reconsider your personal motivation along with long and short-term consequences for your actions. If we all truly work together in good faith, we can do a lot of good things at Cherry Point, and that Cherry Point Companies and Wacom County can thrive now and into the future. Thank you.
And just as a reminder, if there's no one else after Mr. Alasy, we will close that in public session.
Yeah, I wanted to talk about homelessness. Patrick Alasy, forty-eight twenty-five, Olson Road, Birch Bay. You had talked about homelessness way back in the spring. We do have people that need places. Working on that, so I don't know where you guys are on that. I'd like to see some movement forward. On Cherry Point, I've talked about Cherry Point before. Think it should be preserved for a future container port. I like business. I believe in business. I believe that the consumer needs to pay the cost of whatever he's buying. If he doesn't pay the full cost, it screws up the economy and the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, we will close the open session and move on to. Finances.
All right. Finance Administrative Services Committee. We have five items, and they all received three-zero vote. The first item is a resolution approving a salary schedule and policies of unrepresented Wacom County employees effective January one through December thirty-one, twenty nineteen, AB two-zero-one-eight dash three-zero-nine. It received three-zero vote in the committee, and I saw move for approval.
It's been moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Bird absent.
Next item is a resolution ordering the cancellation of accounts, accounts receivables more than four years old, AB two-zero-one-eight dash three-one-zero. This also received three-zero vote, and I saw move for approval.
Been moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Bird out of the room.
Next item is a resolution ordering the cancellation of checks, warrants more than a year old, AB two-zero-one-eight dash three-one-one. This also received a three-zero vote in the committee, and I saw move for approval.
It's been moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six-zero with Mr. Bird out of the room.
The next item is ordinance establishing the North Shore Drive Edgewater Lane Stormwater Improvement Fund and establishing a project-based budget for North Shore Drive Edgewater Lane Stormwater Improvements Fund, AB two-zero-one-eight dash three-hundred. This received three-zero vote in the committee, and I saw move for approval.
It's been moved for approval. Would the clerk please call the roll? Oh, sorry. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Tim Blue?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
That passes six-zero with Mr. Bird out of the room.
The next item is ordinance establishing the East Smith Hannigan Road Intersection Improvements Fund and establishing a project-based budget for the East Smith Hannigan Road Intersection Improvement. CRP number nine-one-four-zero-zero-two, AB two-zero-one-eight dash three-zero-zero. This also received, oh, I read the wrong number, sorry. Did I? AB two-zero-one-eight dash three-zero-one. This item received three-zero vote in the committee, and I saw move for approval.
It's been moved for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Brenner.
Yeah, I'm going to speak against it. I feel like we asked questions today, and Public Works is going to bring us some of that information, but I think we should get that information before we make our decision. I thought it was a great idea because it was better than things are now, but, oh, this is great. Not me again. I really think in some respects, especially with the population, the makeup of our population that we are aging, and I think it's safer to have a, a good left-hand turn lane with a, with a light instead of the roundabout. I mean, I can't tell you how many times I see people who are afraid to go or people who, you know, cut other people off. And one of the questions was, how many accidents? I'm not talking fatalities. I'm talking accidents associated with roundabouts. And I just think it would be a lot simpler to do that turn lane instead of the roundabout. I think we've kind of, I think we're kind of overdoing it with roundabouts. But again, I, I would at least, I'll make a motion. I move we table this till we get the, do the, we get the answers from Public Works that we asked about.
So there's been a motion to table. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
That's a motion to second. A motion to table supersedes, supersedes the main motion. Any discussion on the motion to table, Mr. Sidoo?
I think that, yes, of course, there are a few people who don't like the roundabouts. But in general, I have seen the one at Wacom Community College, and then one, the couple of them on Pol Lord. They've been working very successfully. I've lived there thirty years before the roundabouts and after the roundabouts. There's a day and night difference of number of accidents, and people actually slow down. I have seen four-way stops. I have seen turn signals with, with the arrow lights and other lights. This is a safe thing if, yes, it's a generational thing. I feel like twenty-five-year-old and I just go over roundabouts with no problem. But there are people who are not used to it. There's something new for them, but it doesn't mean it's a bad thing. So I, I would vote against holding it. I would say just go ahead and build that.
Ms. Brenner.
I never said it was a bad thing. I never said I don't like roundabouts. In fact, I said I actually do like roundabouts. I think that this is a, a place at that corner where we'd be better off with a turn signal than a roundabout. And if you want to talk about the roundabout at Cordada, I don't know which one you're talking about. One of them, Councilmember Bird brought this up today. It's got two, it's a two-lane instead of a one-lane roundabout, and you could be in the inside lane and cut across someone who's in the roundabout and still be legal doing that. I mean, there's a lot of things with the way we've got that roundabout at Cordada that, that it isn't good. But I would like to hear what the accident level is, period. I'm not talking about fatalities. I'm just talking about accidents. And if we can do something better and simpler, let's do it. So I'm not convinced.
Further discussion on the motion to hold? Seeing none, all in favor on the motion to hold, say aye.
Aye.
That's, who was aye? That was Mr. Bird and Ms. Brenner, and all opposed, say nay.
No.
That fails five to two with Brenner and Bird opposed, and Mr. Bird with a big grin on his face for some reason. All right, we're now back to the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion? Ms. Brenner.
I'm just going to, why in the world would you not want to have that kind of information before you vote on this? I, I, it's, to me, that's, doesn't even make sense that we wouldn't at least want to have that information that we asked about in committee, that, that the director of Public Works said he would bring to us.
Mr. Sidoo.
I think we are not really denying getting the information. That's, that's not, we are, if we pass, it doesn't mean we're not wanting to see the information. Mr. Hutchings can still bring the information. We can talk about it, data and everything, but that has nothing to do with tonight's resolution.
Ms. Brenner, I will recognize you, but the main, the motion you've made has failed, but.
Oh, well, I disagree with what he just said. I can't say that. It does have something to do with it. That's why we need to table it to, it's almost like a joke to say, oh, okay, bring us the information, but we're going to do this anyway. Let's just do it.
Further discussion on the main motion? Mr. Buchanan.
I was wondering if Mr. Schroeder could clarify the difference between establishing a project fund and actually defining the project itself.
Or building it.
Well, it is for a roundabout.
Tyler Schroeder, Deputy Executive. So councilmembers to do was, was correct earlier. This is just establishing the project-based budget, which is to allocate the dollars available to do the additional research and review for preliminary engineering and design to kind of let council know this has been in the six-year road plan as well as the annual road plan. It's number fifteen as we walk through the twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-four six-year road plan. There was an alternative analysis done in twenty eighteen to recognize three different types of design associated with it. During that process, they looked at upgrading the traffic signal with protected left-turn movement. They looked at a single-lane roundabout and a double-lane roundabout. And during that process, it was determined that the double-lane roundabout provided the highest level of vehicle operations while providing a much safer intersection than the existing signal or an upgraded signal at that time. I think the discussion that was there this morning was indicating that there could be a higher number of accidents, but those accidents are much less in severity and a much lower level of fatalities or severe crashes with a roundabout. But that's about as far as I can go down into that detail. This is just to set up the project-based budget, and we will come back, and I'm sure that Dr. Hutchings, the, the director of Public Works, will come back and answer the questions at that time.
Ms. Brenner.
I, I want to say I totally agree with what Tyler just said, that this has been, and I agreed with it. But we got, what started me wondering was we got an email from a fellow, and I kind of was a little, I don't know, I was going, hmm, I don't know, I don't know. But then he went on and on about, you know, the difference it would make and for the people type N, we are, we have a growing older population in Wacom County. And it got my attention, and I just thought at least we should know this stuff. It seems, seems like a small thing to ask.
Further discussion on the main motion, which is the ordinance to establish the improvements fund and project-based budget. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan? Sat Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Tim Blue?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
No.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
That passes six-zero with Ms. Brenner opposed. Next item up is an ord-
One.
Oh, sorry. Six-one. You're absolutely correct. Six-one with Ms. Brenner opposed. Next item up is an ordinance establishing Wacom County Code two-point-four-seven, creating a Wacom County Food System Committee intended to draft, implement, and provide oversight for a countywide plan to strengthen our local and regional food system, AB twenty-eighteen dash three-zero-two. Do I have a motion to approve?
Actually, that was in Public Works. Why?
Yeah, this is-
Oh, 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 I'm through.
What he said, and I move approval at best three-zero in committee.
You don't need it all over again?
Forgive me, Ms. Brenner, I trod on your turf.
Ah, whatever.
So is there a motion to-
I just made it.
You made it. Ms. Brenner has moved it for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Tim Blue?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
That passes seven-zero.
And I just want to add, I think Dana's comments were well, well said, and I, I do agree, we need to actually move on it, not just create another committee.
Next item is a resolution approving the Glacier Water District Comprehensive System Plan. Was that, was that from-
It was also in my committee.
Again, sorry, Ms. Brenner.
Oh, you trying to get rid of me or something?
Uh, no, no.
Okay. This came through committee- Okay, this came through committee really quick, three to zero vote, no controversy, nothing. I move approval.
We move approval, and we are dealing with the blue version, is that correct?
Uh, the version that, yeah. The, I don't remember what color it was, but yeah.
Mr. Sidhu.
Yeah, I, I have, this is, this is exactly the same point we are today, that here we are approving a comprehensive water plan for a water association, and we didn't even get a copy of the plan. We just have a resolution. And, yeah, I, it wasn't in the packet. It just had one little big chart and, did you guys see that? Page seventy and seventy-two.
Did have a copy of the packet, the full plan in the office. It's just about-
Right.
Two and a half inches thick. That's why we had it available online and in the office.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm not really complaining about it, but I just wanted to bring it to the notice now. To me, has this been approved for consistency and the issues we've been talking about for the water associations? Does it meet all the other requirements?
Ms. Brenner.
I did look at it, and I, not only think it meets all the things that we want, but one of the commissioners from there I talked to about this ordinance that we are hopefully going to work on and get passed, and this commissioner completely agreed with it, liked what we're doing. So I, I have a prejudice, I admit, because you actually had somebody in that position saying, good job.
Mr. Sidhu.
I was going to say that maybe we can wait another till December 4th, once we get from WOK, what they are proposing, what changes and consistency and everything, and then have a, some kind of checklist on front of it. Does it meet these five, 10, 11, whatever those conditions are? And PDS should look at it and, and put their stamp on it that, yes, they have read their water system plan, and it is consistent with our CWSP, and it is consistent with our comp plan, and then we should approve it.
Mr. Schroeder.
Tyler Schroeder, Deputy Executive. I was just going to provide one, a point of clarity. This is for the Glacier Water District. So it's a water district, not a water association.
Okay.
So a lot of the dialogues that we were having earlier with coordinator water system planning and the ordinance for 2411 had to do with water associations.
Right.
And, and, and the Health Department as well as PDS has reviewed for consistency to the water system comprehensive plan for districts associated with it.
Mr. Bird.
Wanted to make sure.
I, I like the idea of the checklist on the front of these, letting us know that it's gone through and what it's reviewed for and that it's been checked.
Actually, I, I agree with you. I'm a little uncomfortable signing off on something that I haven't had a staff report from. So, although I do appreciate Mr. Schroeder's comments. Hmm? I know it's got, it's signed by someone who I can't work out who it is, or it's initialled by somebody.
So Tyler Schroeder, just to provide a little bit more background on page 71 of the packet, the checklist might be a really good idea in the future. This one has been reviewed through the Health Department, through Planning and Development Services as well as Public Works as it relates to the consistency for the comprehensive plan, as it relates to the consistency for water system comprehensive plan as well. So there is a recognition that this has been reviewed to be consistent with that by staff. Now whether or not that's, that's appropriate or not is, is a different question. So I think it has gone through that process.
One question, Tyler. Do they have elected board?
The Water District?
Yeah.
I can't say for sure, but I'm fairly confident that they do.
Elected board?
Correct.
Yeah.
And, yeah, Ellen Baker was here earlier today-
Yeah, okay.
-during the committee meeting.
Yep.
And, and I missed that part of the discussion, but I, I thought that it was moved through committee for recommendation from council today.
All right, further, further discussion. Mr. Bird.
I, I wouldn't mind holding this in committee for 30 days and, and having that presentation and having us walk, or having staff walk through what they're reviewing it for and that, what that checklist would look like.
I would accept that. Can I make a friendly amendment? We bump it into January because December's going to get really crowded.
Yeah, let's do it.
Yes.
So your motion is to, give us a date certain, Mr.-
Oh, what's the second meeting in January?
Twenty-ninth, I think.
Yep.
Why would we do, why not December? That's four weeks.
Because we're going to have a lot of, we always get a lot of stuff right at the end of the year.
Work on planning unit stuff.
Well...
You want to get out of here before 3:00 on December 4th?
I have a great suggestion. People have questions, go to the particular staff person and get your questions answered. And I don't have any questions or concerns about this one. I thought it was well done, so.
So the motion is to gen, to hold to a date certain being January 29th? All right, is there a second for that?
I, I second that.
All right. Any discussion on the, on the motion to hold? Seeing none or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That's, Mr. Donovan is in opposition to Ms. Brenner. So it passes five to two with Brenner and Donovan opposed. All right. Next item up was from Planning and Development, and this was withdrawn. Next item up after that is council appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. And in this case, the first one is appointment to fill vacancies to the Watcom County Climate Impact Advisory Committee. Applicants are Ellen Murphy, John Yakowicz, if I said that correctly, Sean, Sean Spurgeon, and Benjamin Backler Adams. And then I have a question, AB 289, I have a question for staff, if I may. Do we know which of the vacancies we're filling and which terms-
Two.
Which, no, I know the number, we're filling two vacancies. But the ones who vacated, what's, what industry segments or what segments do they represent?
I don't think we did it that way.
Didn't, I'm trying to think, didn't we originally try and have a spread that included people from different sectors of the community?
I, I, go ahead.
I can comment on one. One individual also came from the Cherry Point Refinery.
And he-
Derek Gremben.
Moved away.
Correct.
I remember.
Okay, all right, fine. Thank you, that's helpful. All right. Okay, do I have a motion to nominate, do I have a nomination for all applicants?
Second.
No, I need one motion first.
So moved.
Mr. Buchanan moves.
Moved and seconded in opposite order.
Mr. Donovan seconds. Okay, do, Madam Clerk, maybe you want to call each of us, and we'll give, each give two names.
Tim Baloo.
Murphy and Yakowicz.
Barbara Brenner.
Murphy and Yakowicz.
Red Brown.
Just come back to me in a second. I'm just going to find the page.
Barry Buchanan.
Murphy and Yakowicz.
Tyler Bird.
Murphy and Yakowicz.
Todd Donovan.
Backler Adams and Murphy.
What? What? Is that three?
Backler Adams is one of the names in front of you.
Oh, okay.
The second one, I'm sorry.
Murphy.
Oh.
Gotcha, sorry.
He's the guy that goes aye, not yes.
Sat Paul Sidhu.
Murphy and Yakowicz.
Red Brown.
Murphy and Yakowicz.
They were waiting for me. Murphy and Yakowicz were appointed.
Yep, okay. All right, Ms. Brenner.
I just want, the, these were, the four of them that applied were some of the most qualified people I've ever seen in anything. So we were, we're really lucky to get people of that quality.
I think people have a lot of interest in climate impact.
Yeah, but we got some, anyway, their backgrounds were just amazing.
Okay, good. Next item up is request confirmation, so for the record, it was Murphy and Yakowicz. Congratulations.
Dolences.
And, and our appreciation for the other two that applied but didn't, were not successful, and we would encourage them to apply for other positions on other committees or to apply again for this committee should vacancies occur. Next item up is request confirmation of the county executive's appointment of Sterling Chick to the Watcom County Public Health Advisory Committee, AB 2018 dash three-one-four.
May I have to confirm?
Mr. Donovan, move to confirm, is a second.
Second.
Mr. Sidhu, seconds, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes seven to zero. All right. Committee reports, natural resources.
Natural Resources had an update from the Parks and Rec Department about a lot of the capital construction projects they've been doing. It's quite informative. We had a presentation from Seth Fleetwood of the Climate Impact Advisory Committee updating us on what they've been doing. Welcome to the committee. We had a discussion there about a request for long-range planning to help them update the 2007 Climate Action Plan to have more heft to it in terms of how we adapt to climate change and what the county can do to implement policies to deal with that. And we had another discussion about the 1691, what do we call it, the Hearst update, trying to get in compliance or get up to speed with, how do you describe, the year that we're cramming in to try to come up with a plan for all of our consumptive water use issues, and the clock is ticking rapidly, and we're going to be coming back to this on Tuesday at the Surface Water Work Session, and I think the planning unit's meeting tomorrow on this. So it was a good meeting. We didn't solve anything, but moving forward.
Okay, so next item up was finance administrative services.
Yeah, we had a committee, we just had five items, nothing exciting, just regular stuff.
And the committee of the whole, we held an executive session to discuss the legal ramifications of the water association issue we discussed earlier, Public Works.
Oh, yeah, thank you. We had a, we had a very animated discussion regarding Point Robert Solid Waste Management issues, and I do think that we should rescind the ordinance that was passed in haste by the council majority. And, I mean, there are people up there who did a whole lot of research work, whether you agree with them, you know, whether you like them or not, or whatever. There was a lot of work done in it, and I think they deserve for us to at least consider a better way than, than what's, what was passed. So I would make the motion now, but I, I don't want to just, I'm going to bring it up. I'm warning you, I'm bringing it up. And the other one was to, Public Health Advisory Board seeks support to move forward with a proposal to show support for immigrant families. There was a little tweak done to that, and we pretty much said, go forward and produce something that works. And Regina is, the Director of Public, of the Health Department is shaking her head upside down as that's what happened, so, thank you.
If I may ask, I was still engaged with the staff about the water issue when that was being discussed. Is the intent to come back with a resolution or for the council to vote on or?
There'll be, I, I'm assuming there'll be something. We just want, it, it's going to be a resolution, so it would have to come back to us.
Is that correct, Ms. Allen?
Well, they can do a resolution if they want.
I'm just trying to work out what the end result's going to be, that's all.
If they want us to support it, they would bring it back. But if they do a resolution, it has no force of law, so they can do it if they want. What was your question about the water issue, did you say?
No, no, no.
The, the issue that Councilmember Brenner's talking, yes, the intent would be for us to draft a resolution to bring back to, to the Health Board.
And then what is the end, what's the end result of doing, enacting that resolution?
The resolution, there were a few points that we would include in the resolution. One would be to put together a short-term committee to take a look, the Public Health Advisory Board would put together a work group to take a look at some of the implications of health issues on, on immigrant families and to look for longer-term solutions for those health issues. Those were in our pa, that all stuff was in our package. And then the other one was also to draft some comments on the changes to the federal legislation related to the public charge issue, which would limit access to federal services for people entering the, the country or people with green cards in the U.S. So to draft some comments to be submitted by the Health Board.
Right, and so that's a part of, I, I wanted to ask you to come up, say this for a couple of reasons. One is I, I think it's a very important issue. I'd like to see it on the public record. The other is that I'm aware that there is the comment period, and do you need the council to send a letter on behalf of the council for that public comment period?
Yeah, the public comment period closes December 10th, so I believe we will have time to get back to the, to the council as a whole.
Unless the council objects, I would invite you to draft a letter for us to consider and to sign and send in.
That would be great.
Fair enough? Yep. Okay, thank you. Planning and Development.
We didn't have it.
Cancelled. You cancelled my meeting.
Cancelled it.
He looks wounded, okay. Special committee of the whole was, we had a budget work session added because we can, that's why we cancelled planning and left him wounded. And we continued working on trying to balance a budget and meet all the concerns of the county staff, the executive, and the county council. Ms. Brenner.
I would sure like to see us moving on some of this stuff. I brought up a bunch of things, and some of mine haven't even been dealt with yet, and I would like to see them on the next agenda, some cuts. So I'm interested in us not just rehashing the same stuff over and over.
So, Ms. Brenner, I am personally committed to finding time to give you time to talk about the issues you want. Ms., the clerk is trying to find a time in the next week or so that we can all make work, that we can continue that discussion. Other items. Councilmember updates, Mr. Buchanan.
Nothing.
Mr. Donovan.
Couple of quick things. The Lake Watcom Stormwater Utility Citizen Advisory Committee has been working through the summer, and we, they're getting close to having a proposal in terms of, like, we passed this utility and set it up and what the fee structure might be. We are not going to make, I think, remember, if I, we did this about a year ago, the goal was to try to get something in the fee schedule by like now, but that's not going to happen. But they're working, they've, they've got a unanimous proposal about what a fee structure might look like, and consultants are taking a look at that. So just a heads up that that is going slow, but it's going to be coming to us. And the second thing, Councilmember Buchanan and I have been working with the Incarceration, Reduction, and Prevention Task Force that needs a shorter name. We're going to be coming in the next weeks or so with a proposal to slightly change how the composition of that task force looks like. Just getting that out there before, for the first time.
Mr. Blue.
Nothing.
And, and, sorry, Ms. Brenner, then I'll come back. Mr. Bird. I just wanted to confirm, we will have the pleasure of your company for at least one more meeting, is that correct?
One more meeting.
Right, okay.
Maybe two.
What was it? Maybe two.
We don't know how.
Depends how long it takes to certify.
Well, at least one more meeting, I'm keen for that. So we'll have to find something special. Madam Clerk, maybe we can find something special to do on his departure. So, or maybe he'll be running too fast, I don't know. All right, if there's no other business, we are, oh, councilmember updates, anything else? I've just done that. All right, we are adjourned.